My name is David Wenchel. I'm a Public Participation Specialist here in the D E C Region 5. Welcome to the first of four public meetings on the New York State Department of Transportation and Environmental Conservation's draft amendment of the 1996 Ramson Lake Classic Travel Corridor Unit Management Plan. The draft U M P is also a draft environmental impact statement and a draft river area management plan for Main Branch, Serenack River, Main Branch, Racket River, Middle Branch, Moose River, and the North Branch, Moose River. As such, this meeting is also considered a public hearing pursuant to and in compliance with the requirements of the state environmental quality review act and the Wild Scenic and Reservation, Wild Scenic and Recreation River Regulations. As you may have already heard, we are holding a fourth meeting in Utica on Thursday, December 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., just as the other meetings. The State Office Building, it's going to be held in the State Office Building at 207 Genesee Street in Utica. This will be posted in tomorrow's environmental notice bulletin. So, now that we're done with the formalities, all I can think of is Yogi Bear. It's like deja vu all over again. Here we are. I do want to point out some things that we are proposing. Pointing out that what we are proposing in this draft unit management plan amendment is what we, D O T, D E C, and New York State have determined to be the best, most effective, and economically beneficial use of the corridor from Ramson to Lake Placid. A scenic railroad south of Tucker Lake, which will be one of the longest scenic railroads in the country, and a rail trail north of Tucker Lake, which will not only be unique to every other trail in the Adirondacks, but also be unique to many trails across the Northeast. A variety of recommend, these trails and rails will provide a variety of recreational opportunities for visitors and residents, and the most economic benefit to the communities along the corridor. Clearly, the many municipalities along the corridor that have passed resolutions in support of this think this as well. So, since the last time we were here together, a number of things have happened. The Adirondack Park Agency has amended the travel corridor definition in the state land management plan. New York State has purchased the parcel in the corridor near North Country Community College. We have an access agreement with the Lake Placid and North Elba Historical Society allowing public to access their parcel at the end of the northern terminus of the corridor. A draft historic preservation plan has been developed, and a logo and branding statement have been developed as well. These latter two are appendices to the draft U M P amendment, and we ask that you review and provide comments on those as well. We have a simple agenda for tonight. We're going to give a presentation on what we are proposing, and then we're going to accept public comment. Public comments will be held for three minutes so that everybody has an opportunity to speak. If you're going to make a comment, you need your name on a card. I have a bunch of them here already. And if you haven't and you want to make a comment, feel free to go out to the signing table and sign up. If you cannot fit your comments into three minutes, there are still other ways to beat your comments in. We will accept comments by email and by, excuse me, and by letter through January 8th. Contact information is also available on the signing desk. There's a card there that has information on mailing, emailing, and also the address of where you can download and view the unit management plan amendment. Just want to make clear to you that comments, whether they're received tonight or at any of the public meetings, or in writing through email or letters, have equal consideration. It doesn't make any difference whether we hear them tonight or when we receive them in the evening. Before we start the presentation, let me introduce you to some of the D E C and D O T staff that are here. From D O T, we have Ray Kessinger. From D E C, we have Planner John Schmidt. I think he might still be out at the signing up period. Regional Natural Resource Supervisor Chris Alberga. Supervising Forester Rob Gately. And D E C Regional Director Bob Stegman. And now I'd like to introduce D O T Regional Director Steve Kukoris, who's going to start the presentation.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening, folks. My name is Steve Kukoris. I'm the Regional Director for New York State Department of Transportation of the North Country Region. Our region spans from Lake Ontario to Lake Shantling, and obviously through the northern part of the Adirondack Park. So, let me just begin by giving you an overview of the Ramson to Lake Placid corridor, which is 119 miles long. It begins at Ramson, Inaudible County, passes through Herker, St. Lawrence, Franklin County, and terminates in Lake Placid in Essex County. For background, I just want to discuss a few things. Use of this travel corridor is governed by a unit management plan. You may hear me refer to the unit management plan as the U M P. The U M P identifies opportunities for public use consistent with the classification of protected lands. The U M P also considers the ability of the resources and ecosystem to accommodate such use. Currently, the 119-mile-long corridor is designated as a railroad right-of-way. It was constructed in 1892 and was operated continuously until 1972. In 1974, New York State purchased the corridor. The state authorizes use of the corridor through two revocable use-and-occupancy permits, seasonally. The first is with the Adirondack Railroad Preservation Society. That permit goes from April 1st through November 30th. And the other permit is with the New York State Snowmobile Association for December 1st through March 31st. I want to talk a little bit about the project's scope as proposed. From Big Moose to Tucker Lake, we propose to rehabilitate all 45 miles of track within that segment from Big Moose to Tucker Lake. We would rehabilitate and construct sidings with accessible platforms at Sabatys and Beaver River. For the Tucker Lake to Lake Placid segment, we propose constructing a new 34-mile-long trail. There will be shared parking facilities at Tucker Lake and connections to the existing Tucker Lake Trail System. And we also propose constructing new emergency access for the town of Tucker Lake. And you'll see some graphics depicting this in a few slides. With respect to the rail service and rail trail junction in Tucker Lake, this will reimagine Tucker Lake to serve as the terminus for the rail and the gateway for the new multi-use trail system. It'll construct a new platform with a canopy for rail services, reconfigure rail to minimize the footprint, and provide separation for trail construction. It will install a small train maintenance facility and storage track, and connect a rail service and a rail trail to the depot. To the south of Tucker Lake, the following is proposed. The track structure is going to be rehabilitated for rail operations. So, from Big Moose, Big Moose South, that will entail time and valves replacement as necessary. From Big Moose to the north, to Tucker Lake, it'll rehabilitate the track. No physical alterations will be made of passing stations, bridges, or miscellaneous structures. And this preserves the listed features, feeling, and character of the corridor. There will also be railcar improvements, which are separate from the U M P. That includes railcar rehabilitation and the acquisition of a historic dome car. And this slide shows the graphics of the dome car, which was built in 1955 as Union Pacific Number 9001. It's been acquired by the Adirondack Scenic Railroad, and it's being refurbished with delivery anticipated by the end of 2019. With respect to the improvements in Tucker Lake, I'll briefly discuss those improvements before moving on to graphics depicting them. For rail service improvements, there's going to be a 550-foot raised passing platform. A passing track will be added and alignments improved. There's going to be a reconfigured Y-section with a reduced radius, and the storage and maintenance yard buffered with either vegetation or fencing as needed. The rail trail improvements will include a trail proposed around south of the rail bed to join with the town and village trails, and new parking, including capacity for snowmobile trailers. As far as general community improvements, access to the Tucker Lake depot is going to be improved, and an emergency route from Washington Street to McCarthy Street is also proposed. And so, this gets into the graphics that actually highlights each of those improvements. So, you'll see the leader points to the new switch, and the second line crossing New York State Route 3. Currently, there's only one track going across Route 3. The extended existing siding and added third track is also shown. And so, generally, the new tracks are shown in orange. And if you can see it in blue, that is the new raised platform. It's located right there opposite the depot, slightly north of the depot. And again, in orange, there's the reimagined Y-track. The previous track was in purple. The new track with a reduced footprint is shown in orange, and that allows for the train to be able to maneuver and turn as needed. The new maintenance building that I mentioned earlier, and a storage yard, is a pink or purplish color. And as noted, there'd be a vegetative buffer or some type of screening. There we go. As mentioned before, the existing Y-track would be removed, and each trail would be built in its place on the rail bed and connected to the, next time, mention this a little bit later. The existing trails to the south, and at the north end to the new trail. And so, there we go. That shows the connection to the south to the existing trail. And what I failed to mention is this little, this little block up is actually an extension to the north. It didn't fit on the screen without making the slide too difficult to comprehend, so it was added below. But that is the new end of the track where the multi-use trail picks up. And again, we're going to construct the trail on the existing railroad from here to the north. And I've mentioned the emergency access from McCarthy to Washington Avenue. So, there's actually a pass through through the parking lot that actually connects to both of those railways. And you can see the proposed parking areas, essentially three lots or four lots, you know, we'll get there. Those are intended for passing cars. These lots accommodate the snowmobile trailers. And again, as mentioned earlier, that aren't going to be improvements in Sabatys and Beaver River as well. Those improvements include new 300-foot split-level platforms at both locations, and also the creation of a double-ended siding at Sabatys. And with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Bob Stegman from D E C.
Okay, so this is the, this is from the station here north now to Lake Placid. So, what's going to happen along that line is all the rail ties and railroad equipment will be removed from Tucker Lake and Lake Placid except rail ties associated with side tracks at the depots will be retained for historical interpretive purposes. All historic railroad equipment inside will be stored and used in the future for historic interpretive purposes. The proposed 34-mile, multi-use, year-round recreational trail will connect the communities of Tucker Lake, Serenack Lake, and Lake Placid. The trail will be constructed with 10-foot-wide compacted stone busts of the whole length, two-and-a-half-foot shoulders on each side, and the diagram, which I'll show you in a moment, it would be in straight ground. I'll show it in a moment. The diagram depicts a cross-section of the track. The full length of the track will meet ADA accessible requirements. Five major access points will also meet ADA accessible requirements. And wherever practical other access points will be designed, will meet ADA accessible requirements as well. The Tri-Lakes community see the plans we have described as providing significant benefit, both in attracting visitors and improving the quality of life for the residents. This slide shows some of, some of the examples of benefits to the three villages of the north. They're described here, and I'll show you the pictures in a moment. Tucker Lake will have a benefit from both the train and the trail. It is very excited about the potentials of increased visitation, particularly in the junction part of town where train and trail meet. Very welcome as you get to those pictures. Let me just read for you. Well, Serenack Lake and Lake Placid see the trail as being a central component of current future trail graphics. The photos in this slide depict the current and possible future features of the corridor and all locations. This happens to be the causeway across Lake Colby. As has been stated, these slides depict the central relationship between the corridor and the trail networks in the Tri-Lakes communities, so the connections to the communities is very important. This fits right in the recent legislation signed by Governor Cuomo to develop a comprehensive plan for a statewide system of non-motorized multi-use trails, consisting of a network of non-motorized primary corridors linked to and enhanced by regional and local non-motorized Here are some of the descriptions I was trying to find a moment ago of the connections to, as we go through each town, how those connections into, into the town and the village are planned. These are described in detail in the U M P. The draft U M P amendment also includes a draft historic preservation plan. This plan includes discussion, this draft plan includes discussion of the historic significance, the significance, activities, and remaining infrastructure within the corridor. Description of the adverse impacts of the proposed action and preliminary mitigation efforts to address the impact. We are seeking input on the preservation plan during the public comment period, so there's opportunity, it's listed in the U M P amendment. We're also planning a stakeholder meeting with local and regional historic preservation organizations prior to the finalizing preservation plan and the U M P amendment. The corridor end intersects four sections of rivers classified as recreational and two that are classified as scenic under the Wild Scenic and Recreation Rivers Regulation. As such, the draft U M P E I S amendment also is a, a draft amendment to the river area management plans for the Main Branch and Serenack River, the Main Branch of the Racket River, and the Middle Branch, Moose River, and the North Branch, Moose River. So, here's the anticipated schedule moving forward as we move through with the process. Finalization of the U M P will occur, I think, in spring 2020. The rail removal and rehab of the line will be completed by, in the fall of 2020. The trail construction will begin in the spring of 2021 and be completed in 2023. The phases of trail construction have not been determined at this time. Here's the schedule for the public comment period. Due to public request, in addition to the three meetings scheduled this week, we'll also hold a fourth meeting in Utica on December 19th. We also look standard at the public, the deadline for public comments to Thursday, Next steps for the unit management planning process are stakeholder engagement on historic preservation plan, review of comments, finalize historic preservation plan, receive a letter of resolution regarding impacts to historic features, finalize the U M P amendment, present to the Adirondack Park Agency, review approval regarding compliance, and final U M P amendment signed by D E C and D O T commissioners. Here's the contact information for submitting comments. Remember, the deadline is January 9th, 2020, and Dave, as he said, these comments can be in many different forms, email, written, and the verbal type, where we see all of them have been fully. We now turn to you back to Dave.
I have a question.
Excuse me? Not presently.
You've got one of the slides, and I have to go back to it. Go back to the timelines line, please.
Sure.
Do you have?
There's one more.
One more. Now, I'm going to read that. What did you say that happened at the time?
So, we have, I'll read that section as we're getting. Finalization of the U M P will occur in, into spring of 2020, this spring. The finalization, the rail removal and rehab of the line will be completed in the fall of 2020. The trail construction north of Tucker will begin in spring 2021 and then be completed in 2023. And the phases of the trail construction, the segments between, between the villages, have not been determined in what order at this time.
So, 2021, 2023, is that thing there that's not happening? Have you got no timeline?
And we have the last item there that says trail construction. We advertise the contract for trail construction in the winter of 2021. We start the construction in the spring of 2021, and we complete construction in 2023.
Right, and then what's not timed in? The last question is.
The subsequent construction is in 2023.
No, he's asking about the phases.
I'm sorry, Dave.
The phases that.
Oh, the phases, the, the order that that is done between Lake Placid, Serenack Lake, and Tucker Lake is to be determined.
Well, you could do the whole thing if you don't.
Yes.
Okay, that's our time.
Yeah, that's it. Okay. Okay, I'll leave. I'll leave this up here for a little bit so you have that information, but that same information is on the contact forms out on the sign-in sheet. So, now we're going to start the public comment period. Again, if you want to make a comment, we need to have a card. If you haven't, still feel free to go out there and fill in a card and hand it in. People will be called in the order that we receive the cards, except for we always allow elected officials to speak first, as they represent the people. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, even for elected officials. As I said earlier, additional comments can be provided in writing. We have a timekeeper up front here, Chris Alberga, our Natural Resource Supervisor. He has signs. He's going to let you know when there's a minute left, when there's 30 seconds left, and then when you should be wrapping up. This is a process for the participants to provide specific suggestions or identify concerns with proposals. Therefore, we ask you to direct all comments to the state and D E C, because we are the citizen maker, not other groups. This is not a debate or a time to ask questions. We want to hear what you think about what we're proposing. The audience should respect all speakers, whether you agree with them or not. Feel welcome to applaud with someone you agree with. If you don't agree with them, yeah, we ask that you just stay silent. It's helpful if speakers clearly state their specific concerns with the plan and what they would like to be done differently. If you, again, if you cannot fit your comments into the three minutes, we have those other options for how you can put them in. So, with that, let you know that, where's my other notetaker? What we'll be doing is we have two notetakers that will be trying to capture your main points, but I also have a digital voice recorder that will be up here that will make sure we capture everything you have to say. And I'm turning that on now. Okay, and with that, our first speaker is kind of look field, and she'll be followed
You noticed how he looked right at me when he said three minutes and we're elected officials. Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming. This is a great turnout. Welcome to Tucker Lake Central School District, and welcome to our friends from D E C and D O T, and everyone here who's interested in this project. On behalf of the town of Tucker Lake, this is a win-win for all of us here in Tucker Lake. The junction is going to be rocking and rolling like it did back in the day that we all look back to over and over again. D E C and D O T have worked tirelessly on this project, and I know because I've been to many, many of the meetings over time, when they had the stakeholders' meetings over in Raybrook, and we continue to do that and continue to get updates. We, we know what's going on with the state. They've worked together. We had some great correspondence between all the state agencies and all the gentlemen here tonight, and a couple of the people who are not here tonight that we've worked with alongside with D O T and D E C. This is a great project. Tucker Lake has got so much to look forward to, and we're so excited. This is a win for the bikers, a win for the, the train people, the trail people, the snowmobilers. Everybody is going to benefit from this project. And the town of Tucker Lake is so excited for everyone to see this come to fruition. I know it seems like a couple of years out, but time flies, and we've been working on it for a long time. And so, hopefully, without any bumps along the way, this timeline that Bob explained will be kept tight, and we'll see this thing happen in 2023. And with that, I would like to be the first one to give John a written comment from the town of Tucker Lake. You had your meeting with the APA on November 14th. We had a board meeting on November 14th, and thanks to John Quinn and the rest of our town board members, we passed a resolution in support of the new management plan, and we are anxious to see this come to fruition. So, congratulations to the whole community, the whole Tri-Lakes, and particularly Tucker Lake. We are very, very excited to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydie Ellis, and she'll be followed by John Quinn.
Good evening. I'm Lydie Ellis. I'm Franklin County Legislature for District 7. I'm also chairman of the Parks and Trail Advisory Board in Serenack Lake, and I am a Small Business Co-Owner. And I am here saying we are very positive about this implementation of the change to the unit management plan, and I am encouraging us to move forward on this Ramson-Lake Placid Trail conversion. I wanted to talk a little bit about the economic benefits of this, because as they were saying, what they're looking for is what is the greatest economic benefit for the entire community. And we have, for a long time, run numerous bicycle adventures and to many different locations within the United States and in foreign countries. And what we have found when we talk to people in those communities, that a multi-use trail really has a transformative ability to positively impact the economics and really bring up everyone along the trail. The reason for that is that when you have a multi-use trail, people are sweating, working, traveling, enjoying, getting very hungry, stopping and eating breakfast, lunch, and dinner, snacks along the way, and then looking for places where they can stay heads in beds close to where the junction of the trails are, wander into town, look at the stores, purchase things, memor- purchase things, memories, and then come back each year because they enjoy it so much. The economic benefits have been shown in many different states. Minnesota, for example, estimates the value of multi-use trails and trail activities as $2.4 billion, and each region of Minnesota estimated at $88 million just from bicycle travelers. So this economic benefit is from many small businesses getting many benefits from the fact that people come, enjoy, stay, come back, enjoy, stay, come back, enjoy, and stay. So I really would like to encourage us to move forward on this conversion, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is John Quinn, and I see Mayor Paul Maroon has arrived, and I just want to give him that offer if he wants to make comments. You can follow John. First of all, I'd like to thank the Department of Transportation and the Department of Environmental Conservation for a very well-planned plan. I think you've done a wonderful job, and it's a great compromise. With that said, I do have a couple of comments on the plan. In 2011, we had a significant flooding event in Tucker Lake, and as a result of that, a local gentleman who taught at Syracuse College of Environmental Science, of course, we had his senior engineering class through their capstone project and look at why was it flooding as bad as it was? Well, it turns out that Steady Pole Dam on the Racket River doesn't really provide all that much water level control. More of it is influenced by the railroad bridge over the racket, locally known as Underwood Bridge. The opening apparently is too small, so as part of the trail rehab, I would urge the Department of Transportation to take a look at that and possibly add maybe a culvert to set it at flood stage so floodwaters can be passed and upstream flooding doesn't happen as bad. The other comment I have is e-bikes. They're here to stay, and I think it's, they're growing in popularity. My understanding is there's three types of e-bikes. The type one is just a pedal assist, type two is pedal assist with a throttle. My understanding is the plan is to allow type one. I would urge that that be reconsidered, and that bikes with throttles, type twos, also be allowed. As a practical matter, you're not going to use your throttle all the time, maybe just to get going across an intersection. If you use throttle all the time, you'll kill your battery in no time. So I don't see any more conflict between pedestrians on the trail and e-bike users anymore than snowmobiles and cross-country skiers or snowshoes. So I would urge the department to consider that. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Good job, Dave.
Thank you, John. Paul Maroon, and he'll be followed by Chris Wright.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tupper Lake for the travelers in the store. We've looked at this plan for years, and we've heard about different plans, the Ramsen Lake Placid line, the issues, the arguments. The DOT and the DEC have put a plan together that is really amenable to everybody. It keeps everybody happy on both sides, but who is the best benefactor? Tupper Lake. We've got the train coming in, bringing people in, we've got the hikers and the bikers, the snowmobiles, going to Lake Placid and coming back, so we're in a great spot. And I see some business owners out here tonight who live in the junction, who work in the junction, who make money in the junction, they're going to be doing much better after this plan is in full effect. People have asked me, can we take care of the water, sewer, and electricity from the villages standpoint? Yes, we can. We've talked to DOT, we've talked to DEC, we know what they need, we know what we have to do when the trains come in, we know how we're going to be able to handle the people. So this plan is readily viable to the village, to the water departments, the sewer departments, the police, and the electric department. So this plan is well-rounded. You know, and a compromise, we always hear, you read in books, nobody's ever happy. Well, not everybody's happy about this plan, but this plan is the best thing that we can put together, the DEC can put together, the DOT can put together, and to make things great for not only Tupper Lake, but for the Tri-Lakes region, and for the southern part and beyond Lake Placid. So with all the crowded conditions that you hear about over in Keene, in Keene Valley, we're going to be able to take some of that off them, we're going to be able to put them in Tupper Lake, they're going to eat down, sleep here, and hopefully this is going to entice hotels to come in, some more restaurants into the Tupper Lake area. So I wholeheartedly and my board supports this plan, and we thank you for all your efforts. Thank you.
Chris Wright, and he'll be followed by Jan Worski.
I have a camp south of here in New Seabees, so I ride the trails where the rails point out to my new snow belt. And if you go to Beaver River Station on a weekend when the trails are covered, the amount of people at that, on the, you know, at that place is just amazing. Can you imagine that many people coming through, you know, a month earlier and a month later? I think we should actually pull the rails all the way down to Beaver River Station. The lady before me talked about the economic benefit of a trail. Well, you know, what's the economic benefit of the train coming in compared to thousands of people on the trail all the way for another 45 miles? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Jan, and she'll be followed by Dave Stazak.
Hi, I'm Jan Worski, and I am a Tupper Laker, and I am pro-trail. I think the project is a wonderful project that will benefit all of us. I have, I am a small business owner, and I live on Oak Street, and I have some comments about the parking lot, parking lot, that the proposed parking lot. I see wonderful parking lot and ambitious plans for parking, but one thing I did not see, and I'm hoping to have someone address it, is a sound barrier or privacy barrier that will not only benefit me, but all of the small business people and landowners on that street. In addition, I think it's a wonderful unified design concept of having a wall or any type of barrier for sound that would go from one end of the parking lot in that area from, not the Washington Street area, I'm not sure what's going on over there, but as far as from Oak Street to Cedar Street, I think that would be quite beneficial for the community as far as having that, that design carry through as one solid design feature and as a noise barrier and a privacy barrier. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. Dave, and he'll be followed by Pat Peoples.
Good evening. I'm a runner, I'm a biker, and a cross-country skier. I see no problems with the summer use of the trail runners and bikers, but in the wintertime, the snowmobiles and the cross-country skiers. I've been on trails that snowmobiles use, and really I got to say, the snowmobiles, to me, are much more polite than upward more people. When I'm canoeing, it's dangerous. Snowmobiles are very good at slowing down and staying high, they go by everything. The only problem I've got is that snowmobile trails aren't always conducive to be used by cross-country skiers. So I don't know if it's possible in the designing of this at all, or the planning of it, to work in some concept that'll keep the cross-country skiers in one lane and snowmobiles in another way. Maybe not possible, because snowmobiles have got to go all over the place with their bikes for the plus-casting people. But anyways, that's still a concern I've got, if it's at all possible to try and look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Pat Peoples, Stazak, she'll be followed by Hope Ferret.
So I'm concerned I'd like to, Dave and I are just big buds on being outside. My biggest concern, and it's 25 years to be wanting rail, not only here from all the way down Franklin County up this way. As I moved, I found my way up here going, they don't have trails, I can't believe it. So my dream is that this is happening, and it might even be before I'm too great, that I can still do it. My biggest concern is I bike, and I want to focus on biking. I love my bike, and I cannot wait to do more. And the e-bike, I exposed myself a little bit to it in Germany, and I know it's catching on my Wi-Fi everywhere, and that's way two years ago. So I know there's a consideration in the level of how much can we use. Due to the fact we're not going into hills, in theory, we're going flatland. We shouldn't have the big issues, but I do know a lot of people are buying their bikes or renting them when they go somewhere so that they don't have to propel. It's hard. I understand it, I get it, but I think we need to look into that. The other thing is, is that I'm concerned because in Saranac Lake, I call it the rail, railroad, it's scary, right between Raybrook and coming in from Saranac Lake to 86. I'm very concerned. As of last year, I was a little bit upset, and I, I call it going to my grocery store, but I take off, go over there, ski for my hour, and then jump over to go all the way to go up to Placid to go grocery shopping. That is my share, my little shared area that's private, quiet, and wonderful, and I know that snowmobiles were going through there, and at the final month, I think we were at, they had deteriorated that little trail to a point I couldn't identify it. And granted, it was a trail, I don't know what kind of modifications and control we have over it, but they just ripped up that trail. And I don't, I see a few Saranac Lakers here, that that's kind of like a private place that we use, and my concern is respect for both of us. And the snowmobiles have put on muffles now, so we can't hear it as fast, but, you know, it's quiet, and all of a sudden you see this person come through, and it's scary. They're very respectful, usually they wave, but you're just scared the devil out of you, you know, doing this. So my concern is, is that's just one small example of what my concern is. There should be some modifications, so when we're in certain small areas or communities, such as that right there is quite a bit of community, that we need to be respectful population. So those are my two concerns. Thank you, David. And I'm very proud of you.
Thank you, Hope Ferret, and she'll be followed by Jim McCully.
I'm Hope Ferret from Tupper Lake, and yeah, one of the, I've been active in this thing for over 10 years now, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to actually use it if it ever gets done, but I've got to say, it's going backwards. We should be building the trail first, not the rail. When I first heard about this whole thing, when it was first suggested to me at a meeting, I thought, wow, what a great, great thing to do. And my first thought in my mind was, oh, I can't wait to ride my bike to Beaver River. So I'm all for taking, I'm all for taking the tracks out totally and making the trail all the way to Big Moose. The other reason, the other reason that I'm very much pro-trail all the way is because this community, in the winter, when there's enough snow, blossoms. The businesses have people in them, there's people wandering around town. It's really great to see, and it was something we haven't seen in a really long time once Big Tupper closed. And I'm not a snowmobileer, my name is just imagination, but I've met a lot of them in these last 10 years, and they're a nice bunch of people. And they love to come to Tupper Lake if they can get here, and we've got a great group of guys in Tucker that cover that bridge every year with pallets and just so the snowmobiles can get across it. Well, we don't need the tracks, we don't need the train, we just need to have a trail because we need the winter economy. We've got a lot of good spring, summer, fall economy. We need winter economy. We need something that these businesses can count on for the full year, not just the summer and the fall. Thank you.
Jim McCully, he'll be followed by Lee Foster.
I'm Jim McCully, from the Lake Placid Snowmobile Club in Florida. The, I rise as part, of course, of the trail, but I think we are really missing the boat by not taking the tracks out to Big Moose at least. One of the big things here in the Adland Act, as we all know, 55% of all businesses close during the wintertime. We need winter business. I just read the other day where Tupper Lake was given a $100,000 grant to promote winter tourism. Well, you have 5,000 people every weekend in Old Forge that would drive here in an hour, 15 minutes, an hour and 20 minutes if the tracks were removed. What would that do for your winter business? What would that do for winter tourism? The bottom line is, is summertime is not an economic issue, and the way the train is operated in Lake Placid over the years is they come when the tourists are already here, they're basically a miniature golf course that draws off of the tourists that have already shown up. And I think what we all need to be concerned with here, there's another part of this that most people aren't talking about, of having lived in Lake Placid right next to the train station. The yard that they're planning on putting over on Washington Street for those residents, they should be very concerned. It was noisy, they would start their diesel locomotives at nine o'clock in the morning and let them run for hours and hours. It would inundate the entire neighborhood. And there's another part of this. The railroad ties that they're going to have to put in here is huge numbers. The amount of creosote and carcinogens that are going to be washed off of those ties is unbelievable. So, you know, that's a big concern also, but the smell of those creosote-soaked ties is unreal. I think it was in 2012, they spent $3 million to rehab the tracks between Carter Station and Big Moose Station. Okay? You can still smell those creosote ties down there today in the middle of wintertime. Okay? Not only that, but after the first year where they ran five days a week to Big Moose Station, they reduced it to two days a week, and now they go there just 10 times a year. The same thing will happen to go to Tupper Lake. The reality is, is we're going to spend $34 million on what will not last five years. Put the trail in first. If it's as beneficial as we say it's going to be, do it to the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Lee Foster, and he'll be followed by Keith Gortis. Lee Foster, and he'll be followed by Keith Gorges.
I'm probably going to get shot, because I'm railroad. I've worked with rail explorers, and I've also worked as a person with the same railroad as a crewman. I've worked the rail lines. I've worked rail lines for three years, basically. And I've worked them all over the country, and I've seen what rail bikes have done. I saw rail bikes in Serenac Lake with 44,000 people. Is that trail going to make 44,000 people? I don't think so, in my opinion. But, also, I've got some questions for the D E C. One is, I've seen seven titles from land, anywhere from Raybrook, mainly into Lake Clear. I've seen some down south by Forestwood. And they all say that this is a right of way for the New York Central Railroad. And none of those people ever got any money to, when the railroad was supposedly bought in 1972. They never got any money for their properties, for one. For two, I had to run a rail truck five miles up the railroad last year. And I'll tell you, it's not easy, let alone trying to drive a tandem axle truck from Floodwood down towards Tupper Lake for five miles backwards. How are they going to maintain that trail? The other question that I have is, I've forgotten what it was now, that have you senior citizens here? But that's my main concern. Oh, I know what the third one was, was when I was working for rail explorers. We had a lady pass out halfway to Tupper Lake. I called off the rescue squad. They said there'll be an hour or five to time to get there. I had to call Life Light to get, and I just so happened to have Life Light's telephone number in my pocket. After that, every person that was crew boss, that was on rail bikes, had to have Life Light's telephone number in their telephone. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Keith Gorges, he'll be followed by Doreen Ullis.
I'm Keith Gorges from Serenac Lake. I want to say congratulations to Tupper Lake. This is a wonderful thing for Tupper Lake. Being from Serenac Lake is a horrible thing for Serenac Lake. But for Tupper Lake, you do have the best of both worlds. You will become the capital of the Adirondacks. Our elected leaders have led us down in Serenac Lake. I want to make a couple of points. Lee mentioned it. I've looked at a bunch of the deeds. I do not believe New York State owns the underlying land in the Redwood Way, I believe. We have been misled deliberately, and the Supreme Court again and again has upheld the underlying land ownership rights. It will make this nationwide as costing between $1 and $5 million per mile. I believe the section from Lake Placid to Tupper Lake will be at least $40 million by the time it's done. The causeways rebuilding, the stop and re-engineering, the traffic devices, no point in, as far as I know, has been figured out, cost in. And it will cost the taxpayers far, far more money than what we're being willing to believe. It's not to say it won't get done because they have our checkbooks in their pocket, so probably will. But anyway, well, congratulations, Tupper Lake.
Thank you, Keith. Doreen Gorges, and she'll be followed by Rick Godin.
Hi, I'm Doreen Gorges from Serenac Lake, and I wasn't sure exactly what the meeting was going to be about. And my husband, obviously, is Keith Gorges. We didn't really discuss here what each of us, if we were going to say anything, what it would be. And after listening to the proposals here, alls I could think of was, "How wonderful for Tupper Lake." I've worked in a lot of the downtown businesses. I've worked for a tourist of Adirondack Carousel, close to the tracks. I have seen the decrease in tourism with the lack of the trains. And as I was listening, I was really thinking, "How wonderful for Tupper Lake." And whether there was a compromise, I wish that it had gone to Serenac Lake, the tracks. I don't know if that's still possible. I hope that it is. I'm a little puzzled why there's no public hearing in Serenac Lake. And, you know, I know there's the one here, Lake Placid, Old Forge, and Utica. I know there are a lot of people in Serenac Lake that are very affiliated about this subject. And I would just really question how come we didn't have a public hearing in Serenac Lake as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Rick Godin, he'll be followed by Joseph Kimflin.
Yes, I'm Rick Godin from Tupper Lake. I've spent about 50 years of my life in the tourism and recreation business. And I want to support Ms. Ellis's comments about the value of the new efforts out there, the new, the new way of recreation with bike trails and tourism biking. I've got several friends of mine from Colorado who run trips worldwide. This is an extremely popular thing, and so I'm so happy to see the D E C and the D O T bringing this to fruition to get the trail thing off and running. As, as Ms. Littlefield said, you know, this is going to be a great opportunity for Tupper Lake. You know, it's going to have a lot of success, but I will echo Hope and others who say that the trail is really the way to go. We've done some studies at the Wild Center about the new tourism markets, the millennial market that's out there. These people are entirely different than us boomers, okay? They come for a whole different type of experience, and the trail experience is one that's right up their alley and will bring them to the, to the region, to the Adirondacks. And also for the D E C, having a trail system where people are doing active recreation will help mitigate some of the problems that they're seeing in the high peaks region. Will bring them down into the flatlands, enjoying all the communities, and, you know, helping us all prosper from it. So, you know, if the trail can go all the way, you know, it would make it more year round and, you know, I think a lot better thing even for the whole Adirondack part. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Joseph Kimflin, and he'll be followed by Maureen Perosa.
Thank you very much. Yeah, my name is Joe Kimflin. I'm on the board of the Tupper Lake History Museum, but I'm really expressing my own views right now. We may submit something more official from the museum by email eventually. I really like the plan. I think you guys have done a great job with it. I really like the idea of getting it done. From the museum's standpoint, I think it would be a great thing to have more people coming, actually from both directions, the trail and the rail. As some of you know, the museum has been around for some years here at Tupper Lake. This past summer it operated for the first time inside the train station through the generosity of Next Stop Tupper Lake, giving us the opportunity to be there. And I think it could be very complimentary, the trail, the rail, and the museum. On the one hand, the museum could make for a very attractive destination at any point for railroad passengers taking their time to come up, and for that matter, for people using the rails, or the trails, I mean, coming to, you know, some destination to come to with the museum in the station. So I think that's all a good thing. I think that there is sufficient room in the station for us to all cooperate and get along together for the brief periods of the day where the station would get busy because train passengers are embarking or debarking. I think we would still have plenty of ability to all cooperate and work together and make it a good situation for everybody. I did like the idea that somebody raised about the railroad bikes, because I don't know if that's in the plan or anticipated or not, but I know Adirondack Scenic Railroad was previously thinking about doing them. And it seems to me that might be a way to bring a lot more people to Tupper Lake on that section of rail besides the, you know, number of times that the actual trains would run. So anyway, I think it's all a good thing, and thank you all very much. And as I said, the museum hopes to be able to be there and to welcome people to Tupper Lake from both directions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Maureen Perosa, and she'll be followed by Deb Christie.
Hi, everybody. I'm Maureen Perosa, lifelong resident of Tupper Lake, former trail rail enthusiast. I can think all the way back to when Next Stop Tupper Lake started. Oh, sorry. When Next Stop Tupper Lake started in Tupper Lake, and there was a big, you know, excitement about the train to come. And I remember going to a fundraising party that four people came to. And my faith began to waver then, and ever since then, I've become more and more convinced that the way to improve Tupper Lake is to bring the trail in. Basically, timely for this time of year, the trail will save our winter economy. With our ski slope currently not working, this could be the answer. And go drive through Old Forge, drive through any of those areas mid-week, and you can't get through the streets because there are so many people. When you say rail bikes, all I can think of is rail bikes need a rail to work. You have a rail, you don't have snowmobiles. I think the comparison of what you could bring in here in the wintertime in snowmobiles compared to what you might bring in on a rail, on a bike rail, it just, it makes me feel like laughing because we can put bikes on rail trail, get the rails off, put the bikes on, allow the snowmobiles, and we've got ourselves a year-round economic boom for Tupper Lake. And if you don't believe that, ask any member of my family and its large who have spent lots of money packing their bags and their bikes and traveling all over the country to ride bikes on trails. And I often say that's the money that's being taken away from Tupper Lake. One minute to go. I should have read my letter. It's shorter. But I just, I so fervently believe that this is the answer for Tupper Lake that I cannot in good conscience celebrate good for Tupper Lake when the thought of bringing, spending all that money, all that money for their, a train that has no proof that it will succeed, where we have trails and trails and trails that are raking in the money and changing the face of towns. I say rip up the rails, stop the facade of, "Yes, we're going to fix that train," and lots of people are going to roll into town. I don't see it happening, but I do see it happening on bikes and snowmobiles. I hope we can see some sense.
Thank you, Maureen. Deb Christie, and she'll be followed by Craig Harris.
Good evening. My name's Deb Christie, and I'm president of the St. Lawrence County Snowmobile Association. The Childwood Snowpackers, as our local club, are stewards of 16 miles of the travel corridor from Sabates Station to the Franklin County border. Our 1,400-member club wholeheartedly supports removal of the rails and restoration of a multi-use, all-season trail corridor that would support all user groups. As snowmobiles attract this corridor north of Big Moose, would accentuate a world-class trail with connectors throughout the heart of the Adirondack Park. It would connect Old Forge and Tug Hill north into the Adirondacks. As a concerned citizen, I worry about the state's burden maintaining the lands they manage. New York State D E C has many U M Ps and R M Ps coming out all the time with new work to be done and no planned finances budgeted to complete them. I worry about the state taking on additional lands to manage unless there's a budget in place. The rail trail is so important for the economic benefits it will bring to St. Lawrence County and the surrounding counties. New York State Snowmobiling Community stands for a reasonable riding, sustainable trail development to protect our natural resources, safety, and education, contributing to a thriving tourism industry in the state. Snowmobiling is an important part of living in the Adirondacks. To some, it is the mainstream to living here. If the removal of the rails is not possible, we are asking for a balanced approach in establishing this travel corridor. The reroutes promised need to be given as offered in the 2016 U M P. We want a safe connection south and a good connection to Long Lake. No rail restoration should take place until the trail reroutes are completed. We ask the D O T and D E C contact and work with the stakeholders on the 46 miles from Tupper to Big Moose. Thank you for this opportunity to speak and to share St. Lawrence County Snowmobile's position on the Remsen-Lake Placid rail trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Craig Harris, and he'll be followed by Klaus Meiser.
Good evening. I'm Craig Harris. I'm the president of Childwood Snowpackers out of St. Lawrence County. Guys, I really feel you shortchanged us. Want to be real clear about that. There's two main stakeholders on the rail. It was the A S R, Adirondack Scenic Railroad, and it was the New York State Snowmobile Association. New York State Snowmobile Association, St. Lawrence County, and the Childwood Snowpackers do not support the rails from Big Moose up to Tupper Lake. An earlier compromise that we seem to be going back to, we were promised the reroutes. If we couldn't take up the tracks, you were going to give us the reroutes. I haven't seen any effort toward any reroutes. So that's got all the snowmobiles still on these same rails. Everybody, every rider knows somebody that's been hurt on those rails. Lost a ski, flipped over. They're not going like crazy. They're just going along and they catch the rails periodically because they're not the greatest thing to run them. My club, with the assistance of the St. Lawrence County Snowmobile Association, armors the tracks. We go down the Bond River Bridge. It's about a mile and a half south horseshoe, and we armor that bridge with pallets. And then we use cribbing and dunage, and we shovel it all the way down there, mile and a half down, so we can bridge and try to navigate that bridge without losing our crew machine and off the side of the trail. The machine goes off the side of the trail. All our operators know it's a very bad day. There's no help. Helicopters aren't going to come and save you. That's a terrible place to be, a terrible position for any volunteer. But you didn't put any effort into doing anything for us down there. You just said, "Let's put a station down at Sabates." How is that fair to the user groups? There was only two of us. It was the scenic rail, oh, that's right, the scenic railroad. Scenic railroad, where are they getting their money from? It's a, it's just corporate welfare on that. I mean, the snowmobiles have to put in their money based on registration. The snowmobile clubs get their money to take care of our share of the tracks. We put money into the railroad tracks to make them passable. The scenic railroad gets money, and they're not, they're not upkeeping the rails. That's why you've got to spend 30 something million dollars to chase these rails that are supposed to be being maintained. that are supposed to be being maintained all along that you're paying the same operation to do. It just doesn't make any sense that you continue to pile that money into that organization. In conclusion, we would like the tracks pulled up all the way down to Big Moose. There's 14,000 permitted snowmobiles down in Old Forge that are blocked from coming to visit your stores because you continue to keep the tracks. You continue to keep the disaster south of Tucker. You want the snowmobiles, they don't come from Lake Placid. Great bunch of people there, but that's not where the tens of thousands of snowmobiles come from. They come from the south. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Klaus Meiser, and he'll be followed by Jim Rolfe.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that it's been a long time we've been waiting for these nice bike trails and snowmobile trails. And I'm saddened to see that 2023 is when they're going to be done. I would like to see them done quite frankly in 2020. That was possible. The other thing I want to say is that sense of community that I see amongst the people in the snowmobile clubs is tremendous. And I also see that sense of community amongst the people who ride bicycles and the people who ski. The community spirit and the opportunities for people to gather together is tremendous. And the exercise that we get is a benefit too. I know we talked about the economy and how it would be, well, we'd see quite a boost from this project. But I also want to mention that as a community, we get a tremendous boost by being together and doing things like this together. I look forward to seeing our children on these trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Jim Rolfe, and he'll be followed by George Cook.
Good evening. My name's Jim Rolfe. I'm a lifelong New York State resident, snowmobiler for almost 50 years now, thanks to my parents in 1970. A frequent tourist visitor to the Adirondacks all year long and a trail coordinator for the New York State Snowmobile Association. That position pleased me to represent the NICEF to Art. I want to thank the New York State D O T and D E C for allowing to once again give our opinions and experience into the Remsen Lake Placid Travel Corridor Draft Amendment Plan. Directed from the U M P document, Draft Distort Preservation Plan, it reads, "Railroad was a significant engineering accomplishment of the late 19th century, reflecting sophisticated design solutions to problems building through the wilderness environment. The line was instrumental in the arrangement of two commerce, transporting passengers and supplies in the mountains, excuse me, hauling industrial products up the air." As I first rode snowmobile north from Rome, Arizona, to Malone in January 1996, I experienced what, to me, was an amazement marvel that the corridor is. The valleys below the corridor grade, up in front of you, mountains taken out to make the corridor, all done with 1880 material and labor, marvel. Also on the ride, I noticed some of the washouts, rails showing through, missing ties, missing bridges on the corridor that caused me and everybody else to lose, had to ride all around through swamps to get around to get to Malone through the trail, like, maybe. The rails recovered then partially, even though there was 10 feet of snow in Tug Hill that weekend prior, in one day. Got back up, headed back home the next day with my group. In the daytime, more in the daytime now, saw all the washouts again, all the missing rails, the ties. It was one meant usual, one meant left.
One meant left.
Okay. So, one point to the fact that this engineering marvel was put in place for commerce one of the major reasons. Once the rails and ties are gone for a trail, it still is an engineering marvel. It just is going to be a trail instead, used for commerce to benefit all the communities from Big Moose Station to Lake Placid, where the New York State Snowmobile Association and the regulation is still going to be in this plan if it was sent, that we want the rails, we'd like to see rail move to Big Moose Station. Build, I agree with building the trail first. You're going to see what it's going to, what it's going to do to the area, and you're going to have to build a trail down to Big Moose Station if you've any talent, sense at all. Again, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. George Cook, and he'll be followed by Jim Ellis.
Hello, George Cook from Saranac Lake, and it is absolutely irresistible to get a mic in hand. Let me talk first about my wifey, Mareka. I have a picture of her biking to work at minus 27 degrees Fahrenheit, and that's really quite special. Also, when the trail is completed in the Saranac Lake area, she will be able to take people in a medically-supervised health program on those, on that trail. That will be absolutely spectacular for people who are in fit-for-life and other organized health opportunities like that. The young kids will be able to train for NICEF on those trails without worry of injury. And also, thanks to my wife, I have biked all over the world. We're on our way to Vietnam because I have children living 17 time zones away, and we're planning a bike trip in Vietnam. And one of the things that is happening all over the world is the electric bike. And it'll be very simple for an electric bike to go to Big Moose, spend the night, come back to Tucker. And I personally have biked every inch of the tracks right now from Tucker to Lake Placid. It's a little bit of a challenge, but I've done it on an old mountain bike. My friend Barry Kilborn has built his own personal rail bike, and we have a great deal of fun on that thing, but there's no way in the world we could pedal it from Tucker Lake to Big Moose. It's just too much work. It weighs 100 pounds. With a, with a train on those tracks, that's a whole awful lot more weight, and everything will be re-destrued, and there's just no point in continuing with that railroad because of the maintenance. Once the trail is set up, the maintenance will be minimal, and there will be people working to create opportunities to have places to purchase food and food and board along the way, bed and board. And also, I'm also, speaking of boards, I'm the board of Blue Seat Studios, and that's at the northern end of Saranac Lake. We will benefit tremendously by the bike traffic that will go through there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. And Jim Ellis, who'll be followed by Pat Maluski.
1960, or 1982, I was the head principal of this high school. I was fortunate to graduate 162 kids. Last year, we graduated 48. And we're at the old one. People, childbearing age, live here, because there's no place for them during the winter. So as part of my opening, I'd like to ask if this could be entered into the record. It's a, an opinion piece from the Observer Dispatch in Utica, and I'll ask that be put into the record. Thanks, Paul. There's three kinds of truth. There's your truth, there's my truth, and there's the truth. So let's try to sort, if we can, the truth out of all of this stuff. 1974, the governor's office, Governor Malcolm Wilson condemns the far railroad line that is called the Adirondack Division of the New York Central. Of all the people there, to me, the key person was the first chairman of the Adirondack Party, Richard Lawrence. Dick Lawrence saw a chance for a group who were given sort of surrogate stance over the Adirondacks to work with the people in the Adirondacks to continue some development of their economy. Forty-five years later, we have a trail of broken promises. False starts, missed opportunities for economic development in the Adirondacks. Small glimmers in the 1980 Olympics. And after that, nothing until 1996. Oh, I shouldn't say nothing. There was tons, tons of stuff going on. Anyway, the first time you see anything after that is 1996. Governor Mario Cuomo appoints a study commission to recommend changes to the state land use master plan about the Adirondack Railroad Corridor. And the result of that was a choice of option number six of the many options they considered for a multi-use corridor for hiking, railroad travel, snowmobiling. And by the way, I have a son and a grandson who are snowmobilers. So in case there's any question about that, get rid of it. We agreed at that time, even then, the Adirondack Scenic Railroad, that we'd leave the tracks after December 1st and would not be back on the tracks until April 1st. I think that's right. Before I can respond, Rob?
May 1st.
When?
May 1st.
May 1st. I stand corrected. Later on, a group called ARDA begins its campaign to change the game by moving the goalposts. Convenient and pro-bargains between trail advocates aided and abetted by the snowmobile lobby, one of the largest contributors to political campaigns. You can check that out by going to the New York State Department of State. On a trip to Tucker Lake, 2014 or so, loose lips, some state officials laid out the exact parameters of what we're talking about today. Operation. What do you think? So what you and I argued about today had already been decided in 2014. The rail removal and cutting out the legs from businesses in the hotels and motels in Saranac Lake began. A lake placid had already cast its lot with the rippled crown. 2016, the governor announces a rail trail and a new U M P, redefining the railroad corridor as a travel corridor. Thank you. A new U M P for the proposed newly minted option seven was thrashed in New York State Supreme Court by acting Supreme Court Justice Robert May. Three more years wasted. Did New York State, primarily the B E C, follow the prescriptions of the law? Is it what I would be expected to do? I don't think so. So I ask a question, as I, thank you. Why is the B E C the boss of this economic development project? What happened to Empire State Development? No hesitation about that. Did it give up its economic development role in this narrow range of New York State to satisfy the big money interests in Lake Placid and nearby great public? Second, why is the A P A board crippled by so many non-confirmed members? Three, who will speak up for businesses and tourism of Tucker Lake and Saranac Lake? Orda is so far in debt that it would be foreclosed upon if it were a business. So it's time for the state to put up and treat Tucker Lake and Saranac Lake as equals in developing a combined rail and trail.
The last speaker is Pat Maluski.
Hello. I'm Pat Maluski. Living in a little town, small town in Gannover, New York. Right on the rail. I've been sitting down here, listening to people here. Yes, I'm a snowmobiler, member of Tucker Lake, member of St. Lawrence County, member of NICEF. I'm hearing people here that are interested in making economy for Tucker Lake and everywhere else. Yes, the snowmobiles will come more often, and more of them. Well, that's just in the winter. But if you pull the rails, you'll have the people from the bicycle. If you want the long-term agenda and listening to you guys, you'll get a lot more people for tourism, for putting money into your, into the towns. If the rail is there, I ran, ridden rail, ran a train when I was five years old and 12. That was the last time. It's nice, but the long-term agenda of putting $30 million into the rails and then probably $5 million each year, the train's not going to bring that much money in. So we're spending money that's not going to bring money in here. So let's get rid of these rails, go to trails, and bring the economy and listen to people. The other one is, the guy from Historical. What was in Horseshoe? What was in Conifer Station? What was in Sabato? If you're on a train, you're just going to fly by it. You aren't going to see what is there. But if you put up kiosks, how many people here know what was at Horseshoe? Or Sabato? Or Conifer Station? Or any other place? You aren't going to see it on a train. If you're riding a bicycle, you'll be getting people from Utica, everywhere else, all over the country, coming up there to look at the plate and to see our history. A train, you aren't going to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Pat is our last speaker signed up tonight. I want to thank all of you for attending. I want to especially thank those of you who provided comments. The information is still out there. We got three more public meetings. And one thing I want to clarify, I think we had, oh, some people saying deadline for comments is January 8th, and some people saying January 9th. It is Wednesday, Close of Business Wednesday, January 8th, so just keep that in mind. Again, thank you for coming out, and have a safe night.